Well, it's five o'clock, so thank you all for joining us. This regular meeting of the Carefree Town Council will come to order. Please take a silent roll call. And Thomas Borden, please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic and to its fans, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, well, thank you. And I would just remind everyone, especially those who are planning and zoning candidates, to when you come up to speak, speak loudly into the microphones so everyone here can hear you and everyone at home can hear you because we stream the meetings. First item up is the consent agenda. All items listed hereunder are considered to be routine by the town council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member so requests, in which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be discussed separately. Item number one, approval of the October 1st, 2024 Town Council Regular Meeting Minutes as amended in our posted agenda. Item number two, approval of the November 12th, 2024 Town Council Regular Meeting Minutes as amended, also posted on our website. Item three, approval of the December 3rd, 2024 Town Council Regular Meeting Minutes. Item four, approval of the November 25th, 2024 Town Council Special Meeting Minutes. Item five, acceptance into the public record of the December 2024 Paid Bills as revised and posted on our website. Item six, approval of the Combined Trial Balance of All Funds, September 2024. Would anyone like to pull any of these items from the consent agenda? I would like to pull items one, two, and three. I would entertain a motion to approve items four, five, and six.
I move that we approve items four, five, and six.
Second.
Any comments? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passed unanimously. So, item number one, there was a correction. On page one, it should be revised to show Dennis Fitzgibbons as the town attorney. And on page four, it should show Councilwoman Diane Lloyd Roth's correct name. And on item number two, on page seven, again, it should be corrected to show Councilwoman Diane Lloyd Roth's correct name. In item three, it should show on page one, two, and three, and four corrections to Councilwoman Diane Roth, Diane Lloyd Roth's full name and correct spelling. So with those corrections, in my view, these items one, two, and three are ready for consideration to be approved, and I would entertain a motion.
Motion to approve consent agenda items one, two, and three.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Great, passed unanimously, thank you. Okay, item number seven, current events. We have a few current events. One, we have our Carefree Conversations on Friday, this coming Friday, in the Visitor Center from nine until 11:00 at Friday morning, so it's when the farmer's market's going on. And this time, we'll have new council members joining us. Lon Johnson and Diane Lloyd Roth will be there. So it's an opportunity to come out and see two of our new councilmen. Oh, no, it's Diane. Diane was there last time. Colleen will be there. So Lon and Colleen will join me on Friday, nine until 11:00. So it's a chance to come out and see them and see how they get nine after their first meeting, their first full meeting. Another item on the current events is, so our garden seminar series is starting next Saturday morning, 9:30 here in the Town Council chambers. So we have four garden seminars, one a month, January, February, March, April. And our first one is called Landscapes That Can Take the Heat. It's presented by a renowned landscape architect named Judy Milky. She's been with us before. She's published, she's written books, she's entertaining. It's a good program to come to. And if you haven't picked it up, we have some over there, little rack card that shows you all, details about all the seminars. Then on, this is exciting, on, the Sonoran Art League has donated to the town for our 40th anniversary a totem. So it's an 11-foot-tall stack of different art made by eight different artists. They call it the Sonoran Soul. It's between the pavilion and venues. It's really cool. And so on Thursday, January 16th, at 3:00 PM, they will dedicate it. So the artists who made it will be there, will be there. You can talk to the artists. I've encouraged you to come out. And if you can't come out, this one you're driving down needs to just take a look. It looks great. It's really special. And then on January 17th, 18th, and 19th, Thunderbird Artists will be here in Carefree. Then I have some really good news related to Carefree Park. So Carefree Park is trying to purchase, acquire the 48 acres across from the airport, and it's owned by the State Trust Land Department. And across that property is an old military road. It's called the Stoneman Road Military Trail Segment. So it's a segment that traverses that piece of land. And so they worked hard to get the National Historic, National Register of Historic Places to recognize that. And on January 2nd, they did. So it is now, yeah, it's a big, it's pretty impressive. So a lot of heavy lifting went into that by Wendy Mattis, who's the president and chair of Carefree Park, her board, and everyone else who had a hand in. It's a big deal. So, well done. And that's what I have for current events. Anyone else have anything? All right. So hearing none, we'll move on to item number eight, Presentation and Discussion of MCSO's Service Within Carefree by Maricopa County Sheriff's Office Captain David Laterno. Captain, welcome. Good to see you again.
Good evening, council. I've been the captain up here for about a year and a half. Things are going well. The town has adjusted the contract slightly by adding, prior to the addition to the contract, the town at Carefree paid for a traffic car for half the year. They upped that now to where you have a 40-hour deputy assigned to traffic in the town at Carefree. When I say traffic, that's running traffic, making traffic stops, actually focusing on traffic in the road instead of answering calls for service. We've been able to, this has nothing to do with the contract, but there's a contract with Carefree, there's a contract with Cave Creek, and then they also cover New River and Anthem in District 4, which is on Cave Creek Road. We've added a few deputies at no cost. It's just, it helps, contract calls for a certain amount of deputies, we were able to beef that up a little bit. There's manpower shortage countywide, but we've added. So we've gone from, I believe, 16 deputies. We are currently at 21. So we've added extra deputies up here to help with call for service, to back up deputies on certain types of calls. So we spread those extra bodies between the beats in Carefree, the beats in Cave Creek, and also we have beats up in the Anthem area. Everything's going good. We have a new sheriff. Sheriff Jerry Sheridan was elected and took, taken office as of the first. That's a good thing. Sheriff, sheriff has over 40 years with the office. He was our number two in command under Sheriff Arpaio, so he's very familiar with people up here in this area. He's very popular with our office, so it's a very good thing. Not that there was anything wrong or anything under Sheriff Ben's home, but it's a smooth transition through somebody coming in that just can hit the ground running, so that's a good thing for us. The traffic cars, which the town stresses they want us to run traffic, so we do. The traffic car for Carefree is averaging, it's a good average, up, it goes up a little bit more, but I'll say, he makes 100 stops a month. So 100 traffic stops by the traffic car in a month. And that covers everything from speeding, unsafe lane changes, stuff like that, maybe some equipment violations, but the bulk of his stops are clearly speeding through town. And that covers the whole route, the main, up if you come up Pima, up and down Cave Creek, down Tom Darlington, all that is where he focuses his main attention. Like last, the last year when I came in, my standing order with the other deputies that aren't traffic cars is if they're not on call for service, that I want them out on the main parole fairs, even if they're out there writing the reports, but a visible deterrent with the marked units out on the main road. I'm sure you notice that throughout the day, coming and going in and out of town, but that's been our focus. There's not been a rise in any crime burglaries, haven't gone up. I think the traffic car and some of the town adjustments with the roads and the crosswalks and the light and stop signs will help. I just would quote, I would just want to make sure that I say, I could have 30 guys up here on traffic and there's still going to be accidents and stuff that happen everywhere. We're not, we'll never be able to be an accident-free community, it's just not possible. But crimes, there has not been a distinctive rise in any crimes. The ones we would worry about with town, with citizens, would be burglaries, and the numbers have not gone up. I think the last time I was here, there was concern with that group of burglars that were hitting up, they came as far up to Scottsdale, we never did see that group come up here and hit Cave Creek, Carefree, or Anthem. With that, that's my presentation, but I'll take questions if there are any.
Okay, well, great. Well, thank you, thank you for all that. And before I get into a question, Madison, we received a text that the microphone at the podium is not working on streaming. So please take a look at that.
Captain?
While Gary's looking at that, so from looking at your report, it looks like theft is our biggest problem, and I guess speeding.
Yes, that's the focus. Is that coming across? Maybe someone can answer for you. Theft, but I don't want to make that sound like it's a huge problem up here, because it's really not. This community is safe, it's not being bombarded with burglaries. I go and speak, we have a county island down in Paradise Valley. I spoke at one of their HOA meetings, and you'd be amazed, you'd be surprised, how many burglaries occur where people don't shut their garage doors, they leave their cars unlocked. There's a lot of walk-up burglars. It's still considered, somebody takes your purse out of the car, that's a burglary. Theft would be like shoplifting or a theft from a Circle K, and it comes to a dollar amount too, but taking something out of your garage or your car is a burglary. So I don't, I don't want to mislead theft and burglary. A burglary is a, sounds bigger, but it's, it can be your wallet out of the car. Or a burglary, technically, the way the codes are written, the statutes are written, if somebody remains in your backyard unwanted, that's a burglary. That's just the way the statutes are written. So you might see a burglary, and it might be somebody that's actually trespassing somewhere that refuses to leave. We could charge them with burglary. But what I wanted to stress on that is, is what I, what I tell citizens is, don't let yourself be a victim. Don't leave your purse in the car. If you walk away from the car, make sure you lock it. If you're going shopping and stuff like that. It sounds obvious, but it still happens. People leave their garage doors open and boom, bikes and golf clubs are stolen left and right. So, you know, if you see someone lurking around, one of the things I also stress down there, one of the problems they were having is, we believe the burglars were flying drones overhead, scouting during the day, and then coming back at night. So if you see stuff that's, I would stress, if you see stuff that just doesn't look right, the guy doesn't look like he belongs, or call us and let us go, let us come check it out. At least I, we can identify that person, and possibly we have a lead later if something happens in that community.
Yeah, I would say, I wasn't aware of that, 100 stops per month. And I would, as an observation, I would say, a year ago, we got, we were receiving a lot of speeding complaints, and Town Hall was receiving them, and I don't receive as, near as many any longer. And I don't receive complaints like, oh, there's cops everywhere, you know, you're, you're.
Well, you're right, Mayor, but I think the complaint might have been, we don't see them ever, was probably what you battled before.
So we're kind of like, maybe in a good place right now.
Yes, I would agree.
Maybe we are.
No, I would agree. Because we don't get the complaints either, as far as, we never see you guys. But I also don't get, because that was some of the worry, is when we start enforcing traffic heavy, don't be misled to think that only people from traveling through town are speeding. Locals are speeding too.
Absolutely.
And that generates complaints for you guys sometimes too. Why are they stopping so many cars? But we haven't had that, so it is a, we're at a good place.
Yeah, I think so too. And so when you move from 16 to 21 deputies, and you have a big area, so what prompted that?
Well, so the way the sheriff's office spreads out bodies, we have PCN slots, and each district is slated for so many PCN slots. So it's not that we increased, we're getting more to where we should have been. Our problem has been hiring people, getting them in through the door, and, but that's all law enforcement's going through that. We're really hurting as an office. If you look at the sheriff's office, three-quarters of the sheriff's office is really in detention, meaning running the jails. Patrol and the other entities that we have is a smaller portion compared to detention. Sheriff's offices are ranked across the country, size-wise, like we're the third-largest sheriff's office in the country, but that's based on detention and inmates. How many people are in jail? That's how they rate the size of sheriff's offices. LA County, no one will catch LA County. They're a huge. Cook County in Illinois, and then us. And so it's based on jail population. So to answer, get back on track of your question, all we're doing is getting the bodies we should have, which allows us to have, I've gone from four-man squads on day shift and night shift to five-man squads, but also now I'm able to have an administrative deputy that helps keep the cars running. Our cars run 24/7, so we're changing the oil and tires all the time, so I need a guy that helps coordinate that amongst other things. So it's just getting us to closer where we should be. What we would, we'd love to use the term, we're fat, we're not fat yet, but we're getting better.
Okay, well, that's good to hear.
Yeah.
And then one last question. Last time you were here, we talked about motorcycle patrols, and there was a unit in MCSO that would be available, move around to different communities throughout the county. I've never seen one.
They've come up here several times. Here's the problem. We trained four deputies to be, we got five brand-new BMW motorcycles that were basically funded by the government of highway safety, which it's, agencies are given money to run DUI task force and equipment, stuff like that. So we trained up four deputies and a sergeant, and as, as things go with law enforcement, three of the deputies we trained up left for other agencies. Two of them were actually, went to Youngtown or now are motors, so we trained guys, they're now motors at Youngtown. So we still have the bikes, we have two Mustangs. One of the Mustangs is coming up here, so my two traffic cars, I'm sending them to a school this month. It used to, I don't know the name of, Jeff, do you know the name of that? It used to be the Bondurant High Performance Driving School, it's still out there at Firebird Lake. I don't know the name of it now. Chevy-sponsored now, but anyway, I'm sending my two, our two traffic cars to that, because the Mustangs are a load to drive. They're, they're light in the rear end, they'll get away from you if you're not careful, so it takes a special training class. Once they finish the class, one of the Mustangs will be up here for traffic. They're marked, but they're, we call it ghost marked, so it's a white car with white markings on it, so it blends in very well.
Okay, so we've been warned.
But the motors, we're, we're sending guys back through motor school, training, that's a hard class to get in because we don't teach that ourselves. We either have to go to DPS, or Phoenix is motor school, so we have to get slots. So it's not a dead program, but we need to train. So I still have, we have a sergeant in motors, he's got one guy, so it's a two-man unit. So that's why you haven't seen him as much. When it first was going, it started, we'd get the, we had the motors up here a week at a time, but once a month, one week a month, but it's, it's not running very well right now because of bodies. So we're trying to get that back on track as an office.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions from council?
Yeah, I had a.
Go right ahead.
I had a question. On the deputies you're hiring, are they Maricopa County local, are they young, or are they deputies from other parts of the state or out of state? I mean, where are you recruiting?
Well, we have a recruitment division that recruits statewide, but most of the people we hire live within Maricopa County. We have a few, we have a few deputies that live, we have a deputy I know that lives in Dewey. We have a deputy that lives up in Payson, so they come down to work and they work here, then they go home on their days off. Preferably, we hire people that live within the county or are moving to the county. The headache is, it's a money thing. There are agencies that pay more than we do, and so we train guys up, and then they're laterally to other agencies. But we've also lost a ton of guys lately, recently, to retirement. We lost, our detective unit lost five guys in the month of December just due to retirement. So we're not hiring them as quickly, it's not that we're not doing our job hiring, a lot of people don't want to be in law enforcement anymore. We used to really rely on, my early days on in the 90s, a lot of military guys became police officers. That's not happening anymore. Either they're staying in the military longer, or the guys for years there that were over there serving the country in a battle zone, come back with PTSD, they're not, they're not, they don't want to be law enforcement, or they're not able to be law enforcement anymore. So it's a continuous battle of finances, of upping our pay. Other agencies offer big signing bonuses. You lateral to another agency and you get a $10,000 signing bonus. Some are $5,000 up to $10,000, so that's a problem too. So it's just getting people in the door, preferably, another thing we're seeing is the differences in living on what we call the East Valley compared to the West Valley. We seem to be, most of the guys we're hiring lately live on the west side, because it's cheaper to live on the west side, housing's cheaper. When you talk about Scottsdale, Mesa, Tempe, Chandler, it's a little more expensive. So now we're battling, we try to hire guys and place them in districts near where they live, but most of the guys lately we're hiring are on the west side, so the east side, the east side districts are hurting, so we have to send guys that live way out in, say, Youngtown, to Mesa to work. So that's a battle too. So we're juggling that and balancing it. We're getting better, like, look, if I'm getting from 16 to 21 bodies, it's getting better, but it's not as fast as we'd like. But that's countywide, and if you call Mesa, Phoenix, Chandler right now, everybody's battling to get bodies in the door, so.
Other questions?
Just a comment. My wife and I feel very secure and safe in this community, so you're apparently doing a very good job. Thank you.
My guys do a good job, and thank you for that comment. It is a safe community. It really is. I've worked many, I have 34 years on with the sheriff's office. I've worked, our District 1 was at Mesa, I've been the captain out of Fountain Hills, I've run our SWAT division, I've run our search and rescue, and our undercover narcotics, I've had many good jobs here. This is a very safe community. It really is.
I have one comment, or question actually. So there have been some people that kind of go door-to-door knocking, workers, window washers, whatever they are, saying they're in the area doing work, and do you need that work? And some residents have kind of had concern with that, like, are they legit? And other people have told me, oh, I used them, they were. I'm just curious if you've seen a lot of this recently?
Jeff? Yeah, I wouldn't say, Jeff's one of my sergeants up here at the district. I, that, I haven't, we haven't had any complaints. I'm not saying it's good or bad, but we haven't taken phone calls on that that I, that I'm aware of.
Okay.
Okay, good question. Any other questions? Okay, so Captain, thank you very much for coming. You're always a pleasure to work with.
Thank you, Mayor.
And your guys are great, so thanks for all you do.
Thank you. You guys make it very easy. Thank you very much.
Agenda item number nine, Presentation and Discussion Regarding the Cave Creek Unified School District by Superintendent Bill Dozel. Superintendent, good to see you, thank you.
Good to see you as well. Mayor Crane, Vice Mayor Crower, always good to see you guys, council members, thank you for the invitation here. Bill Doel is all the extremely proud superintendent of the Cave Creek Unified School District. Just put this up there, these are my five wonderful bosses, also elected board members. Many people don't know what the job of a board member of a school is. They really have three responsibilities. They have, they oversee policy, they oversee budget, and me. I'm their one employee that they, that they evaluate, and other than that, I'm over everybody else. Love to start with an African tale. Now it's over 30 years ago, I was backpacking and hitchhiking through Africa after college because I needed to find out what I, who I was going to be. I knew I was going into education, but this is a trip that solidified this for me. Anytime I'm out, and literally would watch kids walk through, for an hour. And literally would watch kids walk through an, for an hour through the savanna to come do math problems in the dirt with sticks and things like that. Just made me realize how real fortunate we are here. And yes, those are actual pictures I took myself while I was there. The, uh. The other thing that has stuck with me forever is that, um, if you're familiar with Kenya Tanzania area, the Maasai people. Um, if you see National Geographics or any shows like that, they're, they're really tall, usually wearing red. Um, extremely proud warriors there. And they would go out and patrol and, and keep their village safe. And what many people don't know is that when a warrior came home. Um, the first greeting they had to another warrior was casaria ingera. And that means are the children well? So they've been out on patrol and the first thing they care about, the first thing they ask about are are the children well? And they are hoping that that warrior replies sapate ingera, which means yes, all the children are well. Cause for the Maasai people, they look at their prosperity and the health of their overall community does relate to how are the children doing? And that's always stuck with me and something I really look at as the superintendent, how, how are our children doing? Um, just to share kind of a little bit about CCUSD, our North Star, our heart has to be our students. We don't exist without students. Uh, we are an entity that serves them. Um, so all our decisions have to be based on what is good for the development and the growth of our students. We work really hard now to prepare them for their E. This is my second year as superintendent. I've been in the district over twenty-five years. But gone are the days of us just focusing on college, 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 college. You can graduate from Cactus Shadows now and be ready to enroll in whatever. You know, two-year degree, four-year degree. You can be, you can graduate Cactus Shadows and go right into employment. That's our second E. We have kids and you'll see some stuff later graduating with, with industry certifications and can go right to a job, make good money and not go into debt, going to school and things like that. Um, and then the third E of course, um, is actually enlistment. They can graduate Cactus Shadows and be ready to go serve, um, our country. Was extremely proud last year. Uh, at our graduation, we had six kids stand up that were going to military academies across this country to go, um, join our service. So. That's our, our focus is when our kids leave Cactus Shadows in twelfth grade, again, employment, enrollment. Hey, or enlistment, they're ready for all of those. And what's the biggest, most important thing to me is relationships, relationships with our families, with our kids, with the town. Okay, I think we have a great relationship. Um, I really appreciate all the opportunities our kids have to be involved in the town. Um, and that the, the opportunities you take to be involved at schools with us. Um, again, I just love this quote by, by Simon Sinek. Some people ask, you know. Do you get stressed? And I would be lying if I said I never got stressed. But working hard for something you don't care about is what stress is. Working hard for something we love is called passion. And the passion for kids and the passion for this district, uh, runs deep in Cave Creek, um, and Carefree. Little bit about us, we've got about thirty-nine hundred students now, almost six hundred employees. District boundaries, we go all the way out to Jenny Lind, south to Pinnacle Peak. One hundred eighty-second and then to Fortieth Street. So. From here, if you're driving down Pima, you get to Jomax. That's our southern border to the west. Goes all the way down to Pinnacle Peak to the east of Pima. Um, so we cover a big area, a hundred and seventy square miles. Uh, we have an extremely high graduation rate, very proud of that. And our current average elementary size is around twenty-four students. I would be remiss if I didn't talk about an elephant in the district right now, and it's all about finding our right size. So I, I don't know how familiar you are, but we've had two major declines in birth rates. Uh, two thousand eight and then COVID around those times. We're typically graduating four hundred plus students and only bringing in two hundred kindergarteners. Um, young families can't necessarily afford the price of admission. Uh, we are the wealthiest school district in the state of Arizona. Our home values are valued at over two point seven billion dollars. Um, the average home price in our district is one point four million. If you remove. Um, like Desert Mountain and focus more in the areas where families are located, that's still eight hundred thousand, eight hundred thousand plus is an average home size. So younger families with kindergarteners that will be there long-term. Um, we're seeing that decline and, and similar to what, uh. Our Maricopa County friend said, uh, this is not unique to here. It's Arizona and even across the country with the, the birth rates and that. So again, right now we're about to have hearings and ultimately our board will be making a decision. We have five elementary schools. Right now, they're only forty-seven percent full. So, um, so we're looking at potentially closing a couple of elementary schools. Not something we want to do, not something we'd like to do. But we got to find our right size in order to maintain our budget because our budget is really done on how many students we have. So finding our right size is really the challenge that we're facing now in the district with that. Having said that, I want to talk about how extremely public school proud I am. This is just a quick checklist. If you go through it. You know, school, public school districts, you'll see all of these different accountability measures. We check X in all of them except the one that says follow the abbreviated uniform financial records, which is what charter schools follow. You can see public charter schools have a few of those accountability measures in place. And then our private schools don't have the same accountability measures. Why I bring this up is that I love competition. I want it. Bring me your charter schools, bring me your private schools, bring me all of that. I will put my kids, my families, my staff against any of them. I want to play by the same rules. And again, I'll talk about financing later, um, but if you're taking tax dollars, you're taking public money, then you ought to be accountable for it just like we are. Um, again, I won't go through all of these. Happy to share it with you if you want some of this information, but there are some of the highlights. Of what we do as public schools to make sure we are accountable and, uh, open with all of our dealings. Speaking of academics, we do extremely well. We are one of the highest scoring schools in Maricopa County, uh, in the north every single year. These are all the different tests that our students take. The ASA, the ACT Aspire, ACT, APIB and CT. I'm gonna blow through these because it can be boring. If you want more information, I'm happy to talk long and long about it, but. Um, AASA is really what every public school student grade three through eight takes. So public and charter schools. They, grades three through eight, they take the same test every year. It's English, language, uh, arts and math. So here you can see from third grade through eighth grade, you can see our ELA scores up top, our math scores down below, and the Arizona across the board. And we beat Arizona by fifteen percent plus on every single one. Um, our kids are doing extremely well, um, in terms of being prepared for this test. One of the things I also want to. To note is that AASA is not a test designed to test proficiency. Yet that's what it's accountable for. So they talk about proficiency, even though the test designed is not actually designed to measure that. It's. Designed to measure mastery, not proficiency. Um, but that's the ratings that come out that way. ACT Aspire is the pre-test of the ACT our ninth graders take. Um, we use this to really see where our ninth graders are and help them make a plan and, and have a path to go forward from there. Again, you can see that our kids are doing extremely well. Cactus Shadows, again, if you look from us in the blue to the state in white. We're doing extremely well. So I even wanted to put up. We go right up against the nation. So we beat the nation in English. We beat the nation in other areas and we're slightly below in some, but. Um, our kids in Cave Creek Carefree, um, and all this, well. Again, then we serve kids from Phoenix and Scottsdale and all the other places and New River and all of that as well. But our students do extremely well across the board. Um, and then the high school gets two years from their freshman year to their junior year where they take the ACT. Um, the ACT is our state mandated test. So. And Arizona is one of the few states across the country that that is their state test. So when you see like. I'm from Connecticut. Oh my gosh, Connecticut average score is so high. Well, that's because only the college bound kids in Connecticut are taking that test. Whereas all of our students are taking that test. So there's a big difference there. But again, if you look at what we do, uh, we're at top for our composite, that's overall, then English reading, writing, math and science. We beat the state of Arizona across the board. We also beat the national average across the board. So again. Our kids in CCUSD are extremely, are doing extremely well. Other points of pride because kids are more than test scores, schools are more than test scores. That's one measurement on one day. Talk about advanced placement classes. Our kids are earning college credit in high school through advanced placement, through international, baccalaureate and dual enrollment. Um, and like I said, so that's kind of the enrollment E. Then you've got CTE certifications, technical skills. And that which is really the, um, the employment side of that. Dual enrollment. So last year we had two hundred and sixty-five kids earn college credit with dual enrollment. Their parents basically paid about a hundred bucks for their kids to get a three credit class to go to, if they choose to go to college and use that, they can. So these are kind of the different areas. We're always looking, this is one of the programs we're trying to grow more. Cause again, if we can help our kids and our families, uh, get some of those college credits done early and at a cheaper rate, then we're. We're good to help with that. Uh, now let's talk TSA. So our career, CTE, career and technical education. So a hu- we had a hundred and sixty-eight students take these assessments and a hundred and forty-eight of them passed. So again, they're graduating with a piece of paper now that can get them in an industry door. Right away. So some of the things, our business management, our culinary arts, digital communication, film and TV. And then our finance, software app and design, which is not an easy program. And our sports med and rehab, um, which I'm a little biased to. My daughter actually went through that here at Cactus Shadows and is now the trainer at O'Connor. All a hundred percent pass rates and, and ready to, to move on. Now we had an additional seventy-eight students earn industry certification. So that serves safe. So that's in the culinary. So they're ready to go work in restaurants and things like that. The OSHA ten healthcare, Adobe Premier Pro and customer service. So again. Kids can go walk out of, of Cactus Shadows, right into an industry and make a good wage. Uh, the, the departments of Arizona recognizes some seals. These are students who really go and do a thesis. So this is like a, a college thesis that they complete. We had ten students do it in the seal of arts. Um, and receive that honor through the state, the seal of biliteracy. An interesting cave, CCUSD has always been a leader in the area of, of biliteracy. Uh, we were the first. District to have a Spanish immersion program in the state of Arizona. Desert Willow has been a, a. Um, is now recognized by Spain even as a dual language program. At one point we were the only school, middle school in the state of Arizona that had, um, every kid was taking a language. So again, we had thirty kids received the state seal of biliteracy. Um, and of those thirty, eleven got the CCUSD seal of biliteracy because our standard is higher. Um, and then three of those even got a global seal of biliteracy. Part of there. So funding, the fun part, really quickly. Arizona actually doesn't rank forty-eighth. We rank forty-ninth because the district of Columbia is considered another state district. So we are. Forty-nine. Uh, I would say with what we do for our students and what we're giving our students, we do an extremely great job. Just so you know, the funding sources for our district, seventy-four percent of it comes from local property tax. Uh, we get about twenty-two percent of our budget from the state of Arizona and most of that is. That really is not our M and O budget. It's, it's facilities and things like that. And only about four percent of our budget comes from, uh, from the feds. Those are typically Title One, which is special education students and helping to pay for them. And even with the money they give us, it is nowhere close to the money that we need to educate them properly. Talk about our tax rate history here. We are extremely low. Coming up this year again, we'll be at one point five. Um, but looking at. A comparison, we are the only school district in Maricopa County with more than seven hundred and fifty students. That does not have a maintenance and override or bond passed. You can see that's why our tax rate is so low. Please know with that, and, and again, we are also one of only seven, I believe it's seven, school districts in the state that fully fund. Our budget from local tax paying dollars. So we do, we are non-state aid district. All of, uh, again, two point seven billion dollars worth of, of property. Our budget this year is sitting at about thirty-two million. All of that gets raised. We get no state aid. In fact. This, this could be an example of your, your tax bill, and I wanted to use this because. If you see on the top line, you're gonna see a tax that says additional ed tax ARS fifteen nine nine two B. Please know that our tax rate is so low at that one point five. That the state comes in and says, oh, we're gonna tax you, you know, you're gonna have a secondary taxed, um, because your tax rate is so low. None of that money comes to Cave Creek. That all goes to the general fund. We're scheduled for about twelve point five million dollars of taxes raised here, local taxes. To go down to the general fund instead of stay in the district. You'll notice even at the end, the change, it's, that's up thirty-three percent. Again, I told you kind of enrollment is declining. So if enrollment's declining, our school budget requirement is gonna be less. Our property values are increasing. So ultimately, the tax rate is gonna continue to go down for us. But you're always gonna have that secondary, that educational or additional ed tax. Um, that again, is not staying here locally. It's going down. For others, for other districts who don't cover their costs. We also received no basic state aid based on the last twenty twenty census. Uh, this area decreased in poverty. Um, so we got a nice notice about two months before school started that we'd be decreasing our budget another three hundred fifty thousand dollars. Based on AD's new method of, of allocating those special education funds. So. Again, just kind of a changes in publicly funded education. It used to just be public schools. Then there came charter. Now we've got with, um, the empowerment scholarships and ESAs or vouchers, depending on what you want to call them. The types of educational opportunities that are funded publicly now are still public. They are still charter. Homeschool and even private schools. And again, I don't mind any of that competition. I relish it. I think we stand up great against it. I just want to play by the same rules. Um, if we're gonna play the same game and we're gonna get all the same things, then, then let's do it the same way. I would love to be able to talk to you about how we compare, uh, charter schools. We blow their scores out of the water. I can tell you that. I'd love to be able to tell you how we stack up to private schools. I can't because there's no mandated test that they have to take or the results that they have to share. You know, again, biggest thing for me is. Let's take, uh, let's take the challenge and, and, and play by the same rules. What I would ask anybody, uh, just to move forward together is please join us as like the Maasai warriors, um, and ensuring that all of our children are well. Please join us in promoting competition where the rules are the same for all entities. Please let customers, clients, friends, community aware that you know. There's a high quality education at CCUSD schools and we can find their, and will find the right place for their child. We provide a great education with a small town feel. I will say that you are a big part of that. Again, those things that our kids get to come to, whether it's Veterans Day things, whether it's part of the fortieth anniversary celebrations. You know, whether it's, um, any of those things. That's great to come here and see our kids involved with the community and you guys are a big piece of that. Even your, your Carefree Cares awards that you come and do our, our board meeting is, is a nice small. Well, I don't want to call it, but it's a small touch that actually goes a long, long way. Um, for our teachers recognizing that there are people out there that, that care about, uh, what they do for kids. Watch for future business and community breakfast. You're more than welcome to attend. Please set up a time to come visit any of our campuses and see the great things going on in public education. Um, and if you want any more information, just let me know. I don't know that you have any questions or I've totally exceeded my time, but I will, I will entertain anything that you would like.
I do have a couple of questions. One. The enrollment that's going down. Do you know where it's going? Is it going? More to private schools, homeschooling, charter schools where? The second thing is you're saying that the campuses that's open for us to come visit. Can we come and visit inside the classroom and view the text? You know, the curriculum, the text material that you have?
Uh, well, text material, all of that is online, but yes. Call me and I'll take you on a tour. We'll go into classrooms. We'll. We can, we can help tour wherever you'd like to go. If you want to go in libraries. Yeah, yes. And then I believe your first question was where are they going? Uh, remember a large portion of this is just graduating four hundred and only bringing in two hundred. Um, what we do know, um, is that in our, in our district. Uh, we do have a thousand students who are taking advantage of the ESAs. So now, um, that was the last report that we got. We get a, a quarterly report. Three years ago, the total was about seventy. So the, the universal expansion of that has really increased that and, and like I said, the last report that we got from. Uh, quarter three was, was a thousand and one actually students in our district are taking advantage of the empowerment scholarships. So again, what we don't know. Um, is how many of those students were already. Doing something else, whether that's private school or homeschool and now are just took it. Um, what I do know is that all of a sudden we didn't lose a thousand kids. So many of those were already. You know, at, um, private schools or homeschools or whatever, and now they, they take advantage of that. Um, we know we do lose. Um, our southern border, we lose the most open enrollment kids to PV. Um, it's typically in between eighth and ninth grade. So Pinnacle High School is, is close. We get the most students down Carefree Highway, which is really Deer Valley. So we get the most students from Deer Valley. We lose the most, um, to Paradise Valley in terms of open enrollment. So members, did that answer? Okay.
In terms of your, um, declining enrollment and forty-seven percent. Enrollment at the schools, the five elementary schools, wouldn't bringing that down to say three. Improve the strength, if you will, of those three schools because the money follows the kids?
Correct. Money does follow the kids and that is. Correct. I mean, we're looking at it, can we really afford to run five buildings? So that is in fact what's coming up is, um, is there's been a recommendation and we're doing. Um, the required meetings and forums and all of that to go through. And we are looking at closing two schools. at closing two schools. So, therefore, it would go down to three, which would therefore, again, without getting too much into it, but if you've got five, if you've got 10 first-grade classrooms across your district, and they're spread out in five schools, inevitably, one school only has one, one has two, one has three, so your equity and staffing is off. So, yes, bringing and consolidating them is going to make us much more efficient and add to some of our cost savings and things like that as we move forward.
So, you were saying that the AASA test measures mastery, not proficiency? What would, do you think your numbers would be if it was proficiency?
It'd be higher.
What, like 10 percentage points, 5 percentage points?
I mean, I, I would bet that it would be, it would be 15 to 20 points, percentage points higher. And I would think that's, that's possibly in the low. And that's, that's my best educated guess, because again, think about mastery of tying your shoes versus proficiency and all of that. And, you know, when does a kid learn to tie, when are they, when have they mastered tying their shoes? Well, you'll probably hear that, I mean, both of my kids, it was at different times, different points, yet we're giving this mastery test of the same thing at the exact same point and expecting all the kids to be there at the exact same time. I don't know. It's, it's a challenge. So, remember, I'm a Rosso. I, I would estimate if we're going proficiency instead, I would think we'd be 20-plus percentages higher in terms of proficiency versus mastery.
Well, in, on your graph or chart, the fourth grade number is the peak, and then it drops down fifth, goes up slightly sixth and seventh, but then drops down again in eighth grade. And so, it's concerning to see a 50% number, but say, we'll say it's 70%, but like...
Not ideal, not happy. Like, we don't think our work is done.
Right, exactly. So, I was, I was in the leadership class where you came and presented, and I talked about, asked about what strategies you were using, or, and I know you were, you were exploring different options, but in order to improve that, I mean, to me, year-round school seems to be effective.
Well, so there were, I mean, we've recently gone through, if, if this was a couple of months ago, I might have talked about a different elephant about a calendar and things like that, and we had some proposals out there. There are some school districts that have gone to a modified year-round. It's kind of a nine, a nine-week, two-week, nine-week, two-week, nine-week, two-week, and then it's only a, your winter, your summer vacation is a couple of weeks short. You know, we deal with the community and, and their, their staunch-held beliefs or traditions. A lot of times, you know, we look at what school was for us and then kind of portray that on what school needs to be now, even though kids are different and things like that. So, it is, it is something we'll continue to explore. We've got a calendar for this year. We'll, we'll look at exploring some things. There are some, there is some data that does show you don't have as much regression with a shorter summer and things like that. And then, we can do some things over those breaks, too. So, there was also a calendar that went to a four-day work, four-day work week as well, just to put all the calendars out there. I will tell you, as long as I am superintendent, I will not recommend that. I don't believe it's best for kids, and I don't believe it's economically sound for the district. So, that's, that's my thoughts. So, as long as I'm here, I won't recommend it. It doesn't mean a board couldn't change, change and make a motion and do it, but as Bill Dole is all speaking as a professional and what I believe in my heart is best for kids, a four-day work week isn't it?
Well, I think, I just believe in general, we need to do things differently if we want to improve educational outcomes. And I think people really care about that. And so, I think when people, when you bring bond deals or overrides to, to our market, I think that's a really important issue. And unfortunately, with this AASA being kind of like underperforming what you really are performing, that doesn't, I don't think that really bodes well for, for you or our kids, obviously.
Yeah. I appreciate it. And we're not happy, and we're not done.
Okay. Go right ahead.
I noticed you didn't have any trade school or trade courses, or maybe an apprenticeship for plumbing, electrician, HVAC construction. I mean, those are all very, very high-paying, as we all know, when we have someone come to the house.
So, those are, when I talked about CTE, CTE courses, that's Career and Technical Education. So, we are a partner with EBIT, which is the East Valley Institute of Technology. That's actually the last thing that was voter-approved in our district, was that 5-cent tax to actually join that. So, we do have students that go down and participate in anything from aeronautics to mechanics to HVAC, to all of that. They go down to EBIT campus. Those programs are so expensive that for us to run them on our own is just not costs, it's cost prohibitive. But we do have opportunities for those students, and we do graduate students from, that graduate both from us and EBIT, again, with those industry standards. I reviewed the ones that are housed at Cactus Shadows. We do have kids that are going to EBIT that are in those as well. I apologize for not making that clear, but...
What percentage do you think?
Unfortunately, we're only, we, we probably have, I think there's 70 kids this year that are going down to EBIT.
Very low.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Well, and you can only do it as a junior, senior, so it doesn't start until then, but we are growing it. And this year, we actually have 16 interns out in the community that are doing intern programs at various, and again, not as much as we would like, but we've had, Erin Share is our Director of College and Career, and she's done a great job boosting those the last couple of years, and we anticipate it continuing to go up, especially as we recognize that that's a valuable thing. Again, there's, you can have a great life, a great job right out of high school if you do those things.
Well, I know a lot of the unions are looking for apprentices to come in, and they pick up some of the tax, so if you can partner with some of the unions.
And we just actually had, the state of Arizona just had their Apprentice of the Year Awards, and we had, one of our students was the Apprentice of the Year. She was a chef. She was one of three females and the only high school student, and was recognized as one of the apprentices of the year for the state of Arizona. So, we're working on it, and we'll continue to do so.
Okay. Any other questions? Well, good discussions. Thank you, Bill. It's always great to see you. And I would also, just to build on one comment that you made, so many of us don't have kids. There's not so many kids in our town, but when we get the students from, from the school district to come up here for Veterans Day Memorial Day, we see them in the theater, Desert Fiddles Theater comes up here. We see them at our Christmas program. It's always great to have them, and they're, they're just great kids.
Yeah. Very fortunate, be blessed with the families and the kids that we have up here, and, and again, the partnership and the relationship we have, I appreciate immensely.
Okay. Well, thank you very much. Item number nine, presentation and discussion regarding the Cave, oops, excuse me. Item number 10, Town Council, Appointment of Three Planning and Zoning Commissioners to Serve a Term of Four Years. So, we have three vacancies for appointment on our planning and zoning commission. So, in 2023, we changed the way we manage our planning and zoning commission. We went to four-year stagger terms, and that meant that, as it turned out, we had three incumbents who were given two-year terms, and those two-year terms are expiring. And if we look at those three seats, one is vacant because Councilman Lon Johnson was in that seat, so he, that seat is vacant. Another seat is occupied by Peter Burns, so he has decided to apply for reappointment. And the third seat is occupied by Tom Cross. And Tom Cross, you may have seen him on the list of candidates to, to be considered. He has withdrawn. And I would just say, Tom has, has served as a planning and zoning commissioner for more than 13 and a half years. He would go out into the field and look at every job. He would come into town hall, look at the drawings. He could actually read the drawings. So, he did a great job for us, great service. He's not here tonight, but he, he served us very well. So, we have, now we have eight candidates who are, have applied to fill these three seats. And the way we're going to conduct the process is, each of them will have an opportunity to speak for two minutes, no more than two minutes, and let us say what, why they want to do it, what they're bringing to the, to the party. And then, after they're finished, we will discuss it, and then we'll, we will vote. For someone to be appointed, they need a majority of votes, which means at least four votes. And we may find that after the first round, we don't, maybe we've appointed one, and we need to, because we have a few who have three votes and not enough votes, then we'll do it again. The lowest, those who have the, the fewest votes will fall off the ballot, and we'll distill this down to three, three candidates. And I would say, after talking to every candidate, we have a very strong pool of, of folks who have stepped forward here. So, no matter the outcome, the town is a winner on this. So, I, I certainly feel good about that. So, to make this as fair as possible, we have the names in a Carefree cup, and we will blindly pull them out one by one, and I'll call you up, and you come on up and, and speak to us for two minutes, and the clerk will, will mind the time. And speaking to the microphone, make sure that people at home can, can hear you. So, first up is Peter Burns.
My name is Peter Burns, and it's been my privilege to serve on P&amp;Z for the last couple of years, and now my term is up. And I reapplied because I think there's a lot to do. And amongst the things, I'm, I'm not sure I'm going to take a whole two minutes, but of all the things that I saw that there was to do, I thought it was pretty ambitious to do that in a four-year term. And then, I saw your strategic plan, which had more items on it than even I was thinking about. The stuff that I was thinking about was clearly to deal with the Carefree Quarter. They're going to have to come back with site plans and other associated items. The Town Hall RFP that we've been talking about, I think that has to be pursued because I think that's the linchpin to the Village Center, Town Center redevelopment. Code enforcement, I think, is important for the town to do. I don't think we've been enough of that, and I think we're losing some opportunities for revenues because we have businesses that are occupying retail spaces that are not engaged in retail activity, and they're operating when they should be operating with a special-use permit. I don't believe they have one. So, I would put that high on the list. The posit, and all of these items that I'm talking about now are all in your strategic plan. Town Hall RFP, code enforcement, positioning, the town positioning, what's our market position in the valley here? Zoning review, I don't think our code has been reviewed in a number of years. Design guidelines, don't think that they have been reviewed for a number of years. And then, three elements of revitalization of the Town Center. First is one of your suggestions. Anyway, there's a lot to do.
Okay. I get it. Okay. Thank you, Peter. Okay. Les Hardy.
Mr. Mayor and members of the council, my friends ask me why in the world I would have considered doing something like this. They think I've lost my mind. And I tell them, well, I'm the kind of person who jumps off the dock with both feet into the deep end. I've never been the kind of person who stands on the shore and puts my little pinky in the water to test the water. I've always been involved. I've been involved in, in these kinds of issues for many, many years, both in Southern California and for the last six years that we've been here. I have two strengths, I think, that I could bring to this. One is, I am a lawyer. I feel very comfortable swimming in the ocean of legal documents and zoning and enforcement and, and anything that has to do with legal writing. I'm familiar with that and easy with that. I'm also an artist. From the time that my parents took me to visit the Louvre and Notre Dame when I was eight years old, I have been fascinated with architecture and with planning. I've read widely in those, in those fields. I have a number of ideas about the Quarter and about the revitalization of downtown Carefree. I would like to see both of those become destination places, more than just shopping centers, but places where people are actually out on the street, on the sidewalk, talking, shopping, having a coffee, and a place where people go and leisure and visit with their friends. So, I am willing to work, and I have some ideas. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. I'm Janice Castro. I currently live in the Boulders, and I've lived in the Carefree area for 16 years. My husband and I love Carefree, and we just can't imagine living anywhere else in the valley. I've served on two different HOA boards in our time in the area, and they're a little bit like a small town, and they have their own rules and regulations. And my HOA board time has given me experience with the town's planning and zoning codes, working in tandem with the community CCNRs, while also helping my community work together towards common goals. I've studied the role of the Planning and Zoning Commission, and I understand that the commissioners wear different hats, the additional hats of the Development Review Board and the Board of Adjustment. I've been watching the town's progress over this past year with regard to the development of the two crucial corners of Carefree Highway. I do, I've been impressed by the work done to pass the general plan and the effort to find ways to support the economic viability of the town. I'm hopeful that the town's plans to address some of the zoning codes for the Town Center will make it easier and more profitable for our existing businesses as well as future additions. At the same time, I've been navigating the town's permitting process and planning and zoning at our own home renovation for the last year, and it's been a challenge at times to move forward, and it does seem like there are opportunities to help make that process a little bit more manageable. I think that while it's vitally important for Carefree to address the needs for increased sales, tax revenue, it's equally important to remember the residents that live here and their needs for a less arduous process for improving their properties, making them more conducive to today's lifestyle, and increasing property values in their communities. I believe in stepping up to serve rather than standing on the sidelines where a small, small community and an even smaller pool of full-time residents, and I'd welcome the opportunity to be a part of the planning and zoning process. Thanks.
Great. Well, thank you. Anton Wilke.
Hello. I'm Anton Wilke. I'm a 15-year resident of Carefree. I want to thank you, Mayor and Council, for two minutes. Appreciate that. I'm not going to use the plan I originally had tonight. I'm pretty distracted. My mother's in hospice, and she, but she was stable this afternoon, so I made the decision to come over here. Not sure that's the right decision. Hope it will be. But I do think it's important to tell you that I understand that Planning and Zoning is a consequential body that does important work for the town, and the commissioners have serious responsibilities and commitments that they have to make. And I want to assure you that I will take them seriously. The easy ones and the hard ones, I will do what is required to do the job. Most of you interviewed me, which I appreciate. I think that shows that you take your job seriously, and I thank you for that. So, I'll skip my qualifications and rely on that. Instead, I'll talk about, a little bit about effectiveness. I've got prior relationships with the town stakeholders, the town staff. I've worked with all three that typically interact with planning and zoning. I've worked with the commissioners that exist today. The majority of them, I've been on boards or committees with in the past. And I've also known most of you. I've been on committees with two of you, and I've had relationships with most of you. And I think I have good team skills. The job of planning and zoning is not really a political job. It's a, we're appointed by you. You're our largest stakeholders. Most of the decisions that we will make will either be recommendations to you or reviewable by you. So, our focus has to be making your job easier. I understand that. I see that as my role, and I believe that I'll be successful if, if I can say that. I believe that planning and zoning is more effective with me as part of it than it would be with me without being part of it. Thank you so much. I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Anton. And thank you for joining us tonight. Thank you. Cynthia Bergen.
Good evening. Good evening, Mayor Crane and Council members. I present this evening as a viable candidate to serve on the Carefree Planning and Zoning Commission. Thank you all for taking your time to meet with me and discuss the roles and responsibilities associated with this appointment. My takeaway from our conversation was that planning and zoning is a very important step toward maintaining the character of our sweet town as we continue to grow. We discussed residential parcels still available for development, existing older homes being purchased that are being renovated or knocked down for new builds, and Carefree homeowners that want to build additions or make changes to existing homes. As we discussed, we also discussed commercial properties that are limited and must be carefully considered and planned for success. We briefly discussed improvements to the Town Center. All of these scenarios require careful planning, architectural design, permitting, and sometimes variances that all present through planning and zoning. We also talked about the importance of incorporating native desert plants into the landscape to soften the footprint of the buildings and hardscape. Such plantings also help minimize water consumption, prevent erosion, protect the natural washes, and promote the desert's natural cycle of growth for both flora and fauna. I understand that the role of the Planning and Zoning Commissioner is a four-year term and includes serving the Development Review Board and Board of Adjustments. I love Carefree, and being involved in P&amp;Z is a great way to help shape the future of our community. If appointed, I will serve to the best ability. Thank you for consideration.
Okay, thank you, Cynthia. Jan Neal.
Good evening, Mayor and Town Council. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you regarding the opening on planning and zoning. My interviews were insightful and interesting, and it was really a good opportunity to get to know each of you better. I have a solid business background in tenure in government and the private sector. I'm currently also a small business owner. My background includes information technology, real estate investment, property management, and remodeling homes. I've served on many boards, including HOAs and nonprofits. As one of the few candidates that have attended the majority of the town meetings, I am familiar with many of the current issues facing our town. I often speak at meetings, always from the heart, asking thought-provoking questions and providing feedback. Some of you, however, have perceived my feedback as critical or negative. I'm applying for this position to be part of the solution, to roll up my sleeves, work very hard, and to make things better for the town and its residents. I believe the town's success is predicated on us all having open minds and working together to build trust and transparency. In summary, if selected for the position, I will hit the ground running with my knowledge of current town matters, my ability to understand and work through complex issues by building relationships and exercising, most importantly, sound business judgment and recommendations. I look forward to the opportunity to serve the town of Carefree and its residents. Thank you for your consideration.
Okay, thank you, Jan. Pam Moss.
I wasn't sure I'd be here. Good evening. I am Pam Moss, and I've applied to serve on the Planning and Zoning Commission for the reasons that are very clear that I would like to share with you. It's my wish to preserve the unique small-town flavor with a heart and character and its own uniqueness. We are fast losing those individualities of our towns. They seem to be sprawling messes with great big block walls, and if you got plopped down in the middle of them, you wouldn't know which town you were in. I came to Carefree and purchased property because I've been able to, it's been able to maintain its sense of community and character. The open vistas are enjoyed, and the lovely Town Center is absolutely park-like, and its pavilion is great. And it just fosters the kind of activities that are really binding to a community. Jumping over a bit about me and my background, my qualifications for serving in municipal and special districts with formal training in governmental issues and rules and regulations, as an elected director for Rainbow Water District in Southern California and as a long-serving member of the Budget and Finance Committee of the same, I took special training on governmental issues, rules, regulations, and conduct. My earlier training as a title officer has provided me with a wide knowledge of land, bundle of rights, zoning uses. As title officer, I had to come up with and answer questions regarding easements, right-of-way access, road maintenance agreements, water rights. Yeah, we did those in the old days. They don't do it now. And as an independent California real estate broker of over 40 years, I sold a lot of property, and most of it was land, because that's a unique, special set of conditions. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Okay, last but not least, John Nimskey.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Town Council, staff. My name is John Nimskey, and I am an applicant for the Planning and Zoning Commission. And as the mayor already pointed out early on, all of the candidates for the three slots seem to be very well qualified. We moved to Carefree in 1994, and so we've been a longtime resident. We've seen several reiterations of Carefree in terms of Carefree moving into what I would call the 21st century. I've also served on the Planning and Zoning Commission before, back in the early 2000s. Throughout my career, I've served on numerous for-profit, not-for-profit boards, excuse me, as well as many community organizations, both in Scottsdale and Carefree as well as in Prescott. I've been asked by a number of the council members that interviewed me, why join P&amp;Z again? You've done it, you've been there, why do it again? Well, as a longtime Carefree resident, I believe in the vision that at least I see for Carefree. Carefree is a special community. It's what brought us from Scottsdale to Carefree. And we basically have a rough diamond, if you will, that we can shape in whatever vision we want it to shape into. But that requires collaboration. It requires collaboration between the town, council, the Planning and Zoning Commission, as well as staff. And it needs to be guided by a vision. It needs to be guided by the staff creating and operationalizing that vision. And it requires the Planning and Zoning Commission then to create, if you will, the overview and the structure with which we then operationalize that vision.
Time's up, John.
Time's up. Thank you very much.
Thank you for speaking. Okay, so that closes the opportunity for the candidates to speak. I think we caught everybody, correct? Okay, so now I'll open up the floor to the council for any comments before we begin the voting process.
Yeah, I'd like to. I think it's worth repeating that all of the candidates for this position are well-suited in my eyes. So I really struggled with making a selection for only three people. So very difficult. Each of the individual strengths, related experience, history of serving on community boards, knowledge of the task, knowledge of zoning ordinance, and understanding when a variance is applicable. I can share an architect's and applicant's point of view. I have submitted plans for either design review or variance within just about all of the surrounding communities. And I've noticed that within those towns and cities, the zoning, the major components of zoning and the procedures are very similar. And for a variance, there are state requirements that must be met in order to grant a variance. This position is not to influence freewill, it's rather about enforcing the existing codes. Importantly, applying reason when evaluating design submittals. And there's a need to understand what is being conveyed in the plans and to evaluate the benefits for a variance, while, and importantly, recognizing the impacts of adjacent neighbors when considering a variance. So in the end, making suggestions and conditions for approval are often necessary. Peter Burns has demonstrated these values. He has my vote. He has served on the P&amp;Z for, what I understand, four years. He desires to contribute to our community in a substantial manner. His professional career and civic duties with Arizona State Government and Carefree is notable. Next, Les Hardy. Having lived in Carefree for six years, his community involvement I find impressive. He created and organized several Wheels and Wings events. He's a Cave Creek Museum docent, a member of the Quanus Club, active member, and more. Retired attorney understands the issues to be considered by the commission. I think his skills to present, suggest, and evaluate impacts of the design proposal are strong. His home resides near the SPA designation, and he's provided insight for that project. Next, John Nimskey. As a past member of the P&amp;Z Board, he was known for staying true to his personal beliefs, whether popular or not, and has contributed by applying sound reasoning. I've heard John speak at several social events. His thoughts and insight, I thought, were well-founded. He has worked in senior advisory roles in healthcare industry from Washington to California and has served on numerous boards. I think he's well-qualified. So that's my three.
Okay. Well, thank you. And I would just, this is an opportunity for council to express their thoughts, and you may wish to hold your, announcing who you're voting for until we begin the voting process, and maybe some of the comments will influence what you're thinking. And you're certainly welcome to change your mind if you have a mind to. Any other council folks who'd like to speak?
I just wanted to say just briefly that I think all the candidates are extremely well-qualified. And I do, I want them to know, if they're not picked for planning and zoning, I think you have a lot of skills, and I think there are other places also in the town. So I hope that if you don't get on planning and zoning, it encourages you also to be involved in maybe some of these other areas. But thank you for applying.
Okay.
Yeah, I'd like to just echo the thank you. I think it, I did it. I actually did it three times until I finally got some. But, you know, it's the effort to fill everything out, the effort to go through the interview process, the interview, you know, get up here and talk in front of it. It's a little intimidating. And just a thank you. And I know that there's eight, there's only three votes here, but, you know, y'all have my gratitude for standing up and helping our town. Thank you very much. Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. I basically think that Colleen was reading my notes, because everything I was going to say, she said. But I think that we have great candidates, and any one of you would do a wonderful job. You have great experience, you're eager to serve, and like Colleen said, if you don't get picked for this, we have many other things that we need done in the town, and I would hope that you would consider that. So thank you so much for your interest, and let's move on.
Anyone else?
Yeah.
Oh, great, sorry.
Again, you've all done a great job going through it. I know I went twice for planning and zoning, got turned down twice, but look, I ended up on council, so you never know. But good job, and thanks for all the time you took. I know it's a lot to try and meet with all of us, and we're very lucky in this town to have the caliber of people we have.
Yeah, I would just second everything pretty much everybody said, but I did sit down with every single candidate. And every time I do this, because I've been through, let's see, two planning and zoning, and then you've probably been through more, Cheryl, and then the Town Council position. But it does, it's just a really good reminder, even on top of all the people I talked to at the post office, of how, how many wonderful people we have here in this town and who have very interesting and unique skill sets. And to what Colleen and Cheryl said is that if you are not picked, because there is only three spots, that we have commissions coming up that are going to need volunteers, and so we would hope that you would take that opportunity as well.
Very good. And I would just say, we'll be talking about these other commissions. You know, if you think back in the general plan, we're going to have a water advisory board, we have an open space committee, we'll have other groups to look at some of our planning and zoning or things related to our ordinances. So there'll be lots of opportunities for folks to participate. So having said that, I would say, let's vote. And so how will the voting go? So each of us has a ballot, and so we should mark the ballot, and then I will ask each councilperson to announce who they're voting for, and you'll hand the ballot into the clerk, and they'll tabulate it, and we'll see where we stand. A person needs, an applicant needs four votes to be appointed. Okay, so please mark your ballots. Hey, Clint?
Well, Peter Burns, Les Hardy, and John Nimskey.
Okay. Let's show.
Okay, so my criteria that I was looking for for the individuals for this position were people who demonstrated to me their ability to do research and use that effectively to, you know, gather the facts and make decisions and be able to communicate that effectively, because we do have zoning ordinances that we have to follow. And these are our laws, and we have to follow our laws. And sometimes there are vagaries in, you know, what's being presented to the town, and sometimes there may be some questions about the laws. I also think it's vitally, vitally, vitally important that the person, the people working on the commission be able to work positively with our staff and respectfully. And I like to talk about, you know, working with positive, action-oriented people. I think that's how you get things done. And so I want someone who is, has the ability to be a positive force in our community. So for that reason, the three people that I chose were Peter Burns, Les Hardy, and Anton Wilke.
Very good.
So I agree kind of with everybody with what they're saying on how important it is for planning and zoning and having the right people. That being said, it was a difficult decision because we have very qualified people. So the people I voted for are Peter Burns, Les Hardy, and Anton Wilke.
The people, and I felt we needed people that could work with the community, that would represent the community, because even though they're appointed, we're elected. So that was a good criteria for me. And people who had a background, I thought, brought something new and refreshing to P&amp;Z. So on that, I voted for Cynthia Birkin, Jan Neal, and John Nimskey.
Very good. Juan Johnson?
Yeah, I had a hard time as well. I mean, everyone, phenomenal candidates. John Nimskey. John Nimskey, I met him when I was running for council, and I think I told him, you should do this. I said, you should take my job. So I've met him on many occasions. I think very highly of John, so I'm voting for John. I sat next to Peter, and I got a lot of good information from him. And I think he is a big asset to this town. I'm voting for Peter Burns. And I'm voting for Jan Neal. I liked what you said tonight. I liked, you came up and you said, hey, I may have been negative, but I want to be part of the plan. So you kind of got me on that, and I voted for you.
Okay, very good. Vice Mayor?
Yes. Again, you're all wonderful candidates, and unfortunately, we can only pick three. And my three are Peter Burns, who's demonstrated over the years his ability to go through different scenarios and come up with really good, thought-out decisions. And he has been involved in our town for a long time, and I'd like to make sure that he stays involved. Les Hardy, who I had never met, but really enjoyed meeting and hearing your thoughts about what you think the position requires. And I agree with what you said, so either we're both really good or we're both really bad. And Anton Wilke, who is also very thoughtful and very knowledgeable, and has worked really hard for our town and our community, and he's my third vote.
Okay, very good. Okay, so when I went through this, not only did I look at the, as a comment that you made, their believed in research and do their jobs correctly, I also looked at the four incumbents that we have. And in my mind, we want to have, we want to have a balanced planning and zoning commission. So you look at the talent, the background, the skillsets that are there. And maybe how do we complement that with three new commissioners? And I also think it's important that we have, where all things being equal, we can look at our town geographically, we don't have districts, but kind of spread out our commissioners through the town. So I think that's an important consideration. So I vote for Peter Burns, Les Hardy, and John Nimskey. So that concludes the voting on the first round. So everyone just hand your slips in, so we have a record, and they can tally it up and see where we stand. Okay, so we, Mr. Peter Burns received six votes. Les Hardy received five votes. And John Nimskey received four votes. And all the other candidates received less than four votes. So that means that Peter Burns, Les Hardy, and John Nimskey have been appointed to our Planning and Zoning Commission.
So I...
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, so I would request a motion to approve Burns, Hardy, and Nimskey to serve as our Planning and Zoning Commissioners.
So I move that we accept Peter Burns, Les Hardy, and John Nimskey as new members of our Planning and Zoning Committee.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed, passage naturally, thank you. And thank you to all the candidates. It was a very good process. And... So for me, it was enjoyable to get to know you all a little bit better, so thank you. Okay, moving on to item number 11, presentation by Jim Keen, accountant and assistant town clerk of the fiscal year 2023-2024, restated financial reports from the audit.
Mayor and council, as part of our last meeting where we approved the audit, the second part of this, we always take monies that come in in July and August, and some in September. Those are funds that belong in June, in the previous fiscal year. So I accrue those back to that year. And then after we present the audit, then we do the reverse accruals. So the money comes out of this fiscal year and goes back. Now, it's already in the books that you saw for June. I had already done that accrual. Now we have to reverse them on this side, where we don't think we can spend that money again. So it's an important process that we do. And the sheet that I have, the front sheet, shows the total of the accruals. It's the memo. Nine hundred and sixty-five thousand, three hundred and sixty-seven dollars. And so all of those different categories, when I show the restated July and August, the sales taxes are lower because a lot of the sales taxes that come in in July, all of those go into that previous year, and some of the August as well. So that's the lion's share. You'll see that's the biggest figure on here. And the other things are smaller amounts. The second sheet, I always do, the audit is great, and it has its categories. And there are a lot of things grouped under each one of those categories and those dollar amounts. And so I make a comparison sheet, which is the departments that you look at every month when you see the financial report. The revenue's up top, and so I foot those to the audit amounts that are on the left-hand side. And that's on page 34 in that audit book that was handed out last time. So that foots to each one of those. The first page is the revenues, and you can see the departments on the, you know, the accounts on the right-hand side. And all of that adds up to the eleven point three million dollars that came in. The next page is all of the expenses, and they're broken into all of the different departments that we have. And down at the bottom, there's debt service and capital improvements. And that adds up to ten point nine million. And so we had put three hundred and ninety thousand, nine seventeen in the bank. And so when you look at the page from the audit, which is page 34, you'll see that changes in fund balances last year, three hundred and ninety thousand, nine hundred and seventeen dollars was added to our fund balances. So that foots. And so the total revenues and total expenses matches that. And so what I need to do is, now that I've taken that money out of this year, I have to give you the, we approved the July report and the August report. So I'm giving you those same two reports again with that nine, you know, almost a million dollars taken out of it. And you can see what lines, the first one is the July. And so there were, there were two lines on the previous report that showed the deferred revenues and the things that I was putting back into the other year. So it was on this report. Now those lines are gone because those amounts are gone. They've been moved back into the other year. So for July, we've been doing a lot of capital projects. So, and like I said, most of the sales taxes for July went into June. So you see the change to fund balance, the five forty-five, let's see, five forty-three, eight thirty-five. That's a negative because of that disparity. And so when you look at the next sheet, which is the revenues and expenditures, over on the far right, it's got the new figures for what we did in July. So we brought one hundred and twenty-seven, four seventy-eight in, and we expended five hundred and sixty-two, sixty-nine. So the difference there, all of it, five forty-three, eight thirty-five. So that's restated in this document. The next one is for the next month, which is August. And the August report, kind of the same feature happens. So those extra two lines in the revenues and the deferred revenues, those are gone. And so you'll notice that we started getting sales tax in, so that's good. So the amount of money that we're off is not five forty-three anymore, it's three eighty, oh, one, two. So we catch up as the months go by when we start having our sales tax in this fiscal year. So if you look at the revenues and expenses on that last page for August, it's still a negative in the totals, four twenty-two, six ninety-two. And we're still spending on these capital projects and stuff. The total expenses are five thirty-three. So, you know, with the capital projects and everything, the total expenses were five ninety-seven. And so... So that makes August. And then we had, we have the September report that was under the consent agenda. That also has the accruals and everything out of it. So at the next meeting, we'll have the October, November reports. And so that's where we catch up the year. So that's, we have to do the accruals, and that's part of this meeting. And we have to approve those reports that have been restated. Anybody have a question?
Yes, it happens every year.
Every year.
And...
And we have to do it.
Just the numbers change, but the story's the same.
Yeah. We have to do it.
Okay. Comments or questions from the council?
Jim, can you just, well, just reiterate that we, the state collects all of our sales tax, and then they remit them to us in sometimes a timely fashion and sometimes not a timely fashion.
It's usually a month or a month and two weeks lag.
Yeah, so...
For a lot of those categories, not just sales tax, the state sales tax.
Right.
Herb revenue, yeah, no, herb revenue. All of those are late getting to us. And so it's just, so we just save up as much as we can to do some of these big projects like we're doing this year. And that's the way we've always done it. It's always, we're pretty good to try to pay cash for everything you can.
Anything else? Some might say this is just information only. So, very good, Jim, thanks for the explanation. And closes this agenda item. Thank you.
Thank you.
Agenda item number 12. Consideration and adoption of Resolution 2025-01, Updating the Town Council Strategic Plan for Fiscal Year 25-26 through Fiscal Year 28-29. So some of you might recall, we agreed to do a strategic plan a few months ago. And the objective was to bring in the new council, which had yet to be seated, include the outgoing council, and those of us who were continuing on the town council. And the purpose of the general plan is to come up with a roadmap, right? To think about what's important to us going forward, our goals and objectives. And then to, through a discussion amongst all those parties, come up with agreement, a consensus. And in doing so, we have to remember that we have limitations, right? We have limitations of time, and we have limitations of money. And so how do we prioritize those different goals and objectives that we want to accomplish? So we establish priorities, and we work on those priorities through the course of the upcoming fiscal years. And in putting together the strategic plan, we list those priorities, and we assign a timetable to accomplish them within the resources that we have. If we look at the process, how we got there, like I mentioned earlier, the, much of this was done before we seeded the new three council members, but they were at the table. Some of it was done after they were seeded, and we invited the outgoing council members to join us. And of course, all of the incumbents were part of that process. And to facilitate the process, we brought onboard a consulting group called Bridge Group Consultants. And they consisted of two gentlemen. One is a, basically a career staff member. He served as a town manager in Sedona and assistant town manager in Tucson. The other gentleman was a longtime elected town council person, and I believe Goodyear. So they brought those two perspectives together. So when we had, they created a survey, we all filled it out. Who filled it out? The town council, the old council members, the new council members, the incumbents, and staff. And then we had three meetings to kind of distill all these ideas down into various things that I'll mention here in a second. And a consensus on those different things. And so we came up with a strategic plan. And what's the purpose of the plan? Is to help us develop an operating capital budget going forward, year after year. It helps us execute the general plan that we just passed in November. There's action items in there that we should be doing. So it lists those that are actionable and prioritizes them. It makes us update the capital improvement plan and to, it's a plan that is annually updated. So we'll look at this every year. We'll go through a process, we'll have a workshop, we'll figure it out, and come back to you at a council meeting and share it with you. So if you look at the strategic plan, if you look at it, what do you find? You find what we agreed upon, what we drafted altogether, created a consensus for a vision statement, for a mission statement, for organizational values. What are organizational values? There are things that we believe in as a council that kind of dictate how we ought to be behaving. So that includes respect, transparency, accountability, service excellence, collaboration, and resilience. Resilience means adapting to the different challenges we'll find along the way. And then to come up with the items that are in the strategic plan, like key focus areas. So there are fiscal sustainability, economic opportunity, authentic town community. So that's what we want to maintain as a community. So I think we all just love the kind of town that we have, we want to keep that. Innovative and high-performing organizations, we want to foster that within our town council and staff. And infrastructure. So that goes with the CIP items, right? The Garden Master Plan, culverts and things like that. So if we go, if we look at those items in more depth, financial sustainability. So that includes items like our fire contract, our MCSO contract, and the timeline when that should be visited and paid attention to. Economic opportunity, Peter Burns touched on some of these tonight. The facade program, evaluating options and relocating town hall, evaluating development of an economic market position plan. Keeping our community with a small-town feel. So what does that mean? Updating our design guidelines, updating our zoning ordinances, our citizen participation ordinance, right? That was in the general plan. Forming a Parks and Open Space Committee. Innovative and high-performing organization, coming up with a policy manual for the town council, especially for onboarding new council members. And improving our online portal so we can become more transparent. So it's easier for our citizens to navigate our website, to figure out what's going on. And then we talked about infrastructure. So infrastructure includes the Pima Road-Cave Creek intersection. We've talked about this on several council meetings, working with MAGA and the City of Scottsdale to improve that roadway. That's a strategic plan element. The garden master plan, culvert repairs. Mill and overlay of the very old streets on the east side of town, the residential streets there. So these are all the components that are in the strategic plan. So the strategic plan is in the packet. It lists all these items and these different focus groups. It has timetables based on fiscal years when those items should be completed. And you might say, oh, why don't we do all these things at once? Well, it takes resources to do all these things at once. We have a limited staff. We can't do everything at once. So we sat down, and we figured out how to prioritize them. Doesn't mean as the years go by, we can't shift priorities. Things happen beyond our control. We have to figure things out. But that's basically how it works. And so what, the objective for the council, after we've gone through the surveys, gone through three meetings with staff and council, an opportunity then, after the plan was written by these consultants, that came back to us for edits. We've all had a shot at editing them, sending them back, producing the document that's in the packet that's posted online and that we've seen and if you've lucked, you've all seen. So now our objective is to pass a resolution that adopts that strategic plan. So having said all that, I would open it up to comments to the council.
I would just say that this was a great exercise. We all participated, and we agreed on the priorities. And that was very difficult because, as John mentioned, we have limited resources. So it's not just budget, but it's also people. And so we had to rearrange some things that we would have maybe liked to have gotten done sooner, but we had to prioritize it. And I think it's a good plan. It's a good starting point. We'll see where we are in a year. And I just thought it was a very healthy exercise for all of us to go through.
And I'll just piggyback on that. It's exceptionally healthy because we have three new council members. So I'm not sure when the last time we had three new council members. But to have almost half of us new, and they were, all our new council members were really, let's say, exceptionally knowledgeable at what's going on. So they could come to these meetings and have ideas and positively contribute to the discussion as we're highlighting things they want to accomplish and when they would be accomplished. Anyway, other comments? Sorry to barge in there.
You know, I participated. I missed the first, but I made the December. And I would agree. I think it was a good exercise. And I think the thing to leave everyone with is that it's a living document. It's something that may change. It may alter. Our priorities may be different. So we're not locking ourselves in. We have the flexibility, if we feel a priority needs to shift in years, to do that. I think that's something everyone needs to keep in mind, that it is, it's a great start, but it's going to continue, and it's going to evolve as we go forward. Thanks, John.
Other comments from council? So hearing none, I would entertain a motion to approve Resolution 2025-01, a resolution of the mayor and council of the town of Carefree, Arizona, approving the council strategic plan 2025 through 2028.
So I'll put a motion forward to adopt Resolution 2025-01, which updates the town council strategic plan for fiscal year 25-26 through 28-29.
Second.
Any other comments from council? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passed unanimously? So we'll, you will see this strategic plan referenced going forward. You'll see it reflected in our agendas, in our priorities, the things that we're talking about. And then a year from now, actually, probably nine months from now, 10 months from now, council will get together, have a retreat, review it, and we'll come back to you and share what we find. Anyway, thank you very much. Thank you, everyone, for putting a lot of work into that. And that includes the town staff, because they were all instrumental in putting this together. Okay, that closes Agenda Item Number 12. Call to the public is Agenda Item Number 13. Those wishing to address the council need not request permission in advance. The public may address the council on matters not on the agenda. At the conclusion of an open call to the public, individual members of the public body may respond to criticism made by those who have addressed the public body, may ask staff to review a matter, direct staff to study the matter, reschedule the matter for further consideration and decision at a later date, or may ask that a matter be put on a future agenda. However, the council may not discuss or take action at this time. So please limit your comments to no more than three minutes. I have one slip, Mr. George Nelson.
Thank you. My purpose for speaking tonight is not to be adversarial, but to magnify the issues that, if not addressed, will surely end up in revisiting a property tax vote. Last town meeting, we learned that our mayor administrator and previous council approved spending taxpayer money on a lawyer to defend reputations. The question was asked but never answered. How much did we pay the lawyer? Mr. Mayor, unless you feel we are not entitled to an answer, will you provide that answer tonight? Defending your reputation is quite hypocritical, considering that when my reputation was assaulted by a town employee, I cannot even get an apology to avoid litigation. Evidently, our administrator and elected leaders support a different standard of accountability for themselves than they do for the residents they serve. This is wrong. Mr. Mayor, residents have questioned why a non-resident administrator paid over two hundred thousand in benefits, supported a property tax, the Hampton Inn, questionable housing developments, a water project that cost tens of millions of dollars while benefiting less than 25%. Residents also questioned why conversations with the developer, why conversations with developers interested in eliminating our open space have not been terminated. While the developer of the Carefree and Cave Creek Corner is not required to disclose the standard of retail tenants, we do not need more commercial embarrassments like the Hampton Inn that defy the dignity of Carefree. Mr. Mayor, many residents wonder, since you are a resident and like the rest of us, have to live and look with the consequences of these decisions, since you are the final vote, why does it appear that you are a rubber stamp for the administrator? Comparing our budget to Chandler-Gilbert of Scottsdale is nonsensical. We are a town of 3,600 on 8.5 square miles. They have populations of over a quarter of a million, occupying 10 to 20 times the square miles. We moved to Carefree to live in a small town with downsized budgets and downside government. Hiding behind excuses, everything is posted, is unforgivable. Knowing that only a small percentage of residents at town meetings read or respond to our posts explains why the mayor of residents, why the majority of our residents end up disappointed. A perfect example is the difference in how the property tax versus the Hampton Inn was disclosed and promoted. For the property tax, you had a very active and visual marketing president supported by an army of spokespeople at the post office and other venues. Where were the final architectural plans of the hotel disclosed that belongs on 101? Finally, Mr. Mayor, I thirst to be a positive voice to support you.
Please, please sit down.
Thank you. I figured you'd want me to stand up, but this will be given out to everybody.
All right. So unfortunately, we're unable to respond to items that call to the public, which are not on the agenda. So at this juncture, oh, we have one more slip, Mr. Anton Wilkie.
I'll make this pretty short. I just want to do something that it occurs to me that people should do more often. And that is, thank you for a decision that went against me. I appreciate the process. I appreciate being part of it. And we're all in the same community, and I appreciate that you're looking out for us. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Anton. All right, item 14, adjournment. Have a motion to adjourn?
I move that we adjourn.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, passing unanimously. Thank you, everyone. Thank you for sticking around.